I'll call this meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall.
Here.
Leyland.
Here.
Little. Chalka.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Please join us for a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to civil rights among United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first, entertain a motion on the agenda received as proposed or amended.
So moved.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Supposed the agenda is approved. Next, we will move on to public comments. If there's anybody in the boardroom or on Zoom that wishes to address the board on something that's not an agenda item, please come to the podium at this time. All right, hearing none, we will move on to presentations. We've got Rachel Baumgartner of Cedar Valley Hand Up, here to make a presentation this morning.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors.
Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, is there a place where I can put this?
Yeah, yeah, you can load that in.
All right, the Cedar Valley Hand Up Organization is a reentry transitional housing. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit entity that was established in 2023. We contain a board of 13 members with various backgrounds such as social work, media, business owners, peer support specialists, retired law enforcement personnel, active in the mental health community, and former chief of police. My name is Rachel Baumgartner, and I am the founder of the Cedar Valley Hand Up Organization. I have an associate's degree in applied science, and I have been working as a nurse since 2005. My passion has always been in helping people. We plan to serve men and women exiting prisons, jails, facilities, drug rehabs, short-term mental health stays, homelessness, and veterans in need of assistance. Our goal is not to take away from the already established programs, short-term programs in the area, but to be a continuation of them with a longer timeframe. Our mission is to break generational cycles of dysfunction and provide bridges to success. We're doing this because homelessness has tripled since 2018 in the Cedar Valley, and the recidivism rate right now is sitting around 34.3%. And also landlords are backing out of helping people that we are focusing on servicing. There is not a long-term supportive housing program in the Cedar Valley that focuses on men and women exiting prisons, facilities, and drug rehabs. I should probably do the slides, too, I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
I haven't done this since I was like 12, so bear with me. So Phase 1, as we're trying to obtain $1 million, and we are also working with a realtor to find either two fourplexes or a single eightplex currently for sale. This will be where we pilot our program for men and women, and it will temporarily run in this area. We also need to purchase a 12 to 15 passenger vehicle. These are priced from $40,000 to $60,000. We'll use this for transportation. So I was unaware that they quit making these vehicles so much, so when I went to go look for them the other day, they're pretty hefty in cost. So another avenue is probably looking at maybe a couple seven-passenger vehicles instead. I don't know, we've been deciding what we want to do with that. But the timeline that we're aiming for is to begin implementation as soon as the fall of 2024. Phase 2 is the major development. We are analyzing the Allstat site by the Women's Center for Change to create a community resource center and reentry transitional housing unit. That would include classroom space, 50 male and 50 female shelter units, common amenities such as kitchen, exercise room, sensory room, case management, bathrooms, laundry, et cetera. And then also the possibility of short-term apartments on that area also. The city has agreed to demolish the Allstat complex and adjacent properties in a timely manner. The timeline is dependent on funding sources, and I have a funding slide that I'll go over with you guys here. Program implementation. We plan to run our program for six to 18 months in our new resource center by using the already purchased four-eightplex as a rental property primarily utilized by our graduated individuals to help with some of the overhead for transitional housing at the new location and focus on maintaining infrastructure and refining our program. Our approach, again, we're a six to 18-month program tailored to meet each individual exactly where their needs are. First 30 days will be like a blackout for meeting health needs from a mental and physical aspect. We will also establish goals and objectives on how we will help that individual meet them. After the 30 days, we'll start implementing classes that will go on for six months. These are core classes that will deal with their past, present, hurts, habits, and hangups. And then we'll help them create a bridge to a successful future. From six to 18 months, we will also be a support to help implement all the things that our program will teach them. We are focusing on finding long-term solutions instead of placing Band-Aids over the issues at hand. We either choose to pay now, or we're very much going to pay later. And then our funding, I think I just, okay, sorry. Collaboration, we need the support of the entire community. We are working with Andrew Bell with Align Architecture and Planning, who is currently working on homeless shelter in Ames, Iowa for the Bridge Homes. Our funding consultant is Jerry Floyd, formerly with the Iowa Finance Authority. And then the people and businesses we are planning to collaborate and work with is Marvin Spencer, Supervisor of the Blackhawk County Department of Corrections. We will work with the DOC to identify individuals that are in need of assistance prior to their release date. Iowa Prison Wardens, we will make contact and identify how we can help those in need of reentry housing. One City's Momentum, Dean and Michelle Feltes, utilizing their program for qualifying individuals in our program. Elevate, Bob, the CEO. If an individual doesn't qualify for our program, they might be a better fit with Elevate's Ursh Homes. Horizon's Abby, Program Manager, working together to identify individuals that need long-term supportive services. Mayor Hart, he's a jack of all trades. He has many avenues that are very helpful, including identifying the needs of this community. Local churches such as Hope City, they are creating a dream center, resource center for people in need of a variety of different needs. And then Arlen Yost, CEO of the Bridge Homes. Individuals that complete our program might need more support and may qualify to go through his program. He is tailored just for men. Our potential funding sources, we are investigating a variety of funding avenues, including but aren't limited to the National Housing Trust Fund, which is 2.8 million, Brown Gray Field Tax Credit, Federal Home Loan Bank, CDBG Community Facilities Funds, Otto Schuitz Foundation, Guernsey Foundation, and then, of course, Blackhawk County's opioid crisis funding. And lastly, I just want to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I speak for everybody at the Cedar Valley Hand Up when I say thank you for your time and your efforts.
Thank you. Okay, I appreciate you coming to make a presentation today and the work that you've already done. This is a critical need in our community to help reduce the recidivism in our jails and give these people a fresh start. So I'm hopeful that this, our opioid funding could be a good match for this. That's my hope.
Mine, too. I'm on the board, and I've been on so many boards in regard to this issue, Linda and I together. And quite honestly, all I hear is talk, 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 and I never see any action. I'm impressed with what Rachel has accomplished in the past nine months. Noah Anderson's been working with her to identify properties. And I'm always big on mitigating recidivism. We have too many people going back to jail. They need jobs, they need training, they need support, and they need housing. If we can provide any one of those, the others fall into place. Rachel's reached out to establish good partnerships with people who are passionate about this, people who have made things happen in the past. I'm optimistic. Of course, I won't be able to vote on the opioid funds, but I certainly, I think this is an ideal project for what those funds were earmarked for.
Rachel, where are you in the grant funding process? Or when you listed all the partners or potential funding partners there?
We are starting the grant funding process. I just hired Jerry Floyd to help me understand it better. I've read a couple of books on it. I am by far an expert on it yet. So we plan to start filing for grants. I've already filed a couple, like small ones, just to see where I'm at with what I can work on better. But yeah, we're working on those.
Was this a little bit more geared towards like the programming side? Is it more geared towards the physical building side?
Physical building side right now.
Okay.
Did you send us the, oh, I'm sorry.
There was a, maybe five or six months ago now already? Ben Bruskarn, Tom Echus, a handful of others also came about this exact same building. And so just trying to maybe get my bearings as to.
Yeah.
Is that in partnership, or are you sort of two entities looking at the same site? Sort of?
Sounded like it. I was gonna say Cedar Valley Housing Corp is thinking, and I think that's what they both were looking at the same building.
Okay.
Whatever works, I guess.
Separate entities looking at the same place, yeah.
Okay.
I was gonna ask if you could send the board the presentation.
Absolutely.
That'd be great, thank you.
Any more questions at all?
Any other questions, board?
Thank you, guys. God bless.
Okay, we'll now move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against a various settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Veder. And I see that Mr. Little has directed us.
Do you want me to give you the amount?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Can't go. Sure, we could do that.
That's all right. Good morning, board. Our total bill payment today is $376,268.36. And of that, the 60-40 fund is $3,211.25. And there's really nothing significant or unusual today. Everything appears to be in order.
Can you just speak, the 3211 from the 60-40? Were those all expenditures that we've previously approved? What's?
Yes. Internet service at the range for $347.50. Mid-American Energy electricity for storage at the range for $46.31. Electricity for another facility at the gun range is $266.78. And there's a payment to Permar Security Services of $2,550.66.
Okay. The Permar is probably the bigger one than usual out of that.
That's about what we.
Yeah, just normally, it's a couple hundred to maybe $1,100 every week, and that, yeah.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
That larger number came from.
Yep, I got it.
Yep.
Any other questions or discussion, board? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes, the resolution is approved. Next, we will receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, board. Kathy Nicholas, engineer. Minor flooding is the word of the day today. We are seeing the water rising all over the county, the south-central region in particular right now. We sent notifications out for Hoff Road, Orange Road, just various roads in the south-central portion of the county. Beaver Creek, we do expect that to come up with some flooding in the Hudson area, northwest area, Finchford, that will cease flooding. Crane Creek has also been flooded for much of last week. We do expect that water to rise. We are out and about today placing road closed signs on the gravel road system. So far, it's not impacting the paved road system. I'm encouraging all drivers, of course, not to drive through flooded roads. We also wait until the water starts to go down before we do any type of blading or cleanup. You never know when it might come back up again, so we do. I know sometimes the public wants us to get out there right away and get the gravel roads cleared off, the debris or what have you that's on the gravel roads. We usually wait until the water has completely subsided. We are reviewing our FEMA processes and getting that, reviewing that and seeing what we need to do to be more efficient at that in the next week. Hopefully, it doesn't come to that. And then lastly, I would say if the public is looking for good information site, the Iowa Flood Center has really good information on all the creeks, when they're crest, how much rain we're receiving, all types of information. Public should go to the Iowa Flood Center for more information. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Did you say that link is provided on your website? Or just curious?
I don't know if it is, Linda, but we can do that, and it's just www.iowafludcenter or Google Iowa Flood Center. Do a search on that, and you will definitely find that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, any other department heads or officials?
Good morning, board. Rory Giving, Facilities Director. Just wanted to give you a brief update on the construction here at the courthouse. The crews had finished up framing last week. They're putting up sheet rock. Things are moving along very good. We are still on target with regards to the schedule. This week, we are working on installing a new fire alarm panel here at the courthouse. They say that by the end of the week, that should be complete. So you'll see a lot of activity throughout the courthouse this week. Also, I do owe the board an update on the weather siren for the Hickory Hills campground that has been ordered. And right now, we're looking at that being installed the end of June, early July is our timeframe for that. So I believe Mindy had mentioned when she was here last time that they were going to have some protocols in place to notify the campers in the meantime, so.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other department heads or elected officials?
Good morning, board.
Morning.
Mike Kendrickson, Director of County Conservation. All good droughts must come to an end, and it appears that has happened. So we had a great run for three years, and it was wonderful. But we will officially, probably around noon today, we're waiting for one more update on river levels, but it looks pretty bleak for Blackhawk Park before Memorial Day weekend. But we will have information on the status of all of our parks and all of our campgrounds more than likely just after noon today. So our Facebook page, our website, and all those things, we will make that announcement, but it doesn't look good. Got a great run. Any questions?
Any other department heads or elected officials wish to provide an update this morning?
Good morning, board. This is Mindy Benson, Blackhawk County Emergency Management Coordinator online. Just wanted to let everybody know I've been working with the National Weather Service today. We do have quite an active weather pattern for today. We are in an enhanced weather pattern, so I would urge everybody to please keep in mind of what you're doing this afternoon for outdoor activities. We are in enhanced weather pattern, so we are expecting some weather, active weather from about the 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. We have an enhanced category for tornadoes, damaging wind, and large hail. So if you do have any outdoor weather activities, please keep close to shelters and close to any shelters where you can go indoors, or if you have outdoor weather things planned, please keep your weather apps ready. And I did just work with the National Weather Service today to issue a flash flood warning for Blackhawk County, so that is in effect until tomorrow. I believe, let me pull that up if I can find it again. I did just issue it on our social media as well. So Kathy, all of your roads are gonna see a lot more weather over the next short time. All of those creeks and things like that are gonna be very, very inundated with water. I wish I could find it for you real quick. It is flash flood warnings issued for Northern Grundy, Northern Harden, Southern Butler, and all of Tama, Blackhawk, and all of the surrounding counties. So we're gonna see a lot more water over the next 24 to 36 hours, so keep that in mind as you're traveling as well. If you do see water on the roadways, please turn around and find an alternative route. But we will have a lot more water as we enter the next 24 to 36 hours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, I was wondering, as we wait for Hickory Hills alarm, maybe we could get weather radios into the cameras or something like that?
Yeah, and we do have, we do have a couple of those.
Okay.
And we can, I believe Al's got one down there, so I will check with staff and make sure that that is on and working. So but we do have a couple radios throughout the system.
All right, good.
Yep, absolutely. I did talk to Al the last time I was out there, and he said that everybody's got some type of alerting software on their phones, so they're very aware of what's going on and always in the know as well. And I'm in constant communication with them out there, too.
Thank you. All right, any other department heads or elected officials wish to provide an update this morning? All right, hearing done, we will move on to the minutes approved for the May 14th and May 16th, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 As opposed, same sign. Motion is approved. We will have two hearings coming up a little bit later in the meeting. One is a hearing slash bid opening for janitorial services at the courthouse, Pine Crest and Juvenile Court Services and Sheriff's Office, all located in Waterloo, Iowa. And there will be a hearing on the fiscal year 2024 budget amendment. Next, we will move on to the consent agenda. This will be approved with a single resolution.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes, resolution is approved. And now move on to Section 9, Item A, Contracts and Agreements. This is a resolution that the lowest responsible bid received from Denko Highway Construction Corp, Mingo, Iowa for Project L-7725, crack filling in various locations in Blackhawk County with a total bid of $157,941.68. The engineer's estimate was $172,353.60. Be awarded and direct the chair to sign the resolution, authorizing the county engineer to sign the contract and receive and place on file the contractor's bid and certificate of insurance as recommended by Katherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded? Any questions?
No, as you recall, we did open the bids here in the boardroom. A week ago, there were four bidders. This is under our budget as well as under our engineer's estimate. I would recommend that you take the bid from Denko.
All right, if there's no further discussion or questions, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Little.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes, resolution is approved. We'll move on to Item B. This is a resolution with the lowest responsible bid received from Blacktop Services, Humboldt, Iowa for Project L-7525, seal coating in various locations in Blackhawk County with a total bid of $107,195. Engineer's estimate was $132,155. Be awarded and direct the chair to sign the resolution, authorizing the county engineer to sign the contract and receive and place on file the contractor's bond and certificate of insurance as recommended by Katherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded?
So same story here. There were four bidders opened last week in the boardroom. Blacktop Services was the low bid, and they are under our engineer's estimate as well as the money we have budgeted for FY '25. So I would recommend that you take their bid, and I be authorized to sign the contract.
All right, if there's no further discussions or questions, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Chalka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes, resolution is approved. We move on to other business. Item A, this is a motion that the personal requisition for office specialists full-time with a start date no sooner than June 24th, 2024, in the treasurer's office be approved as recommended by Linda Hinsman, County Treasurer.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 As opposed, motion carries. This is Item B. This is a motion that the personal requisition for the office specialist full-time in the Veterans Affairs Office be approved as recommended by Yolanda Lovelace, Veterans Affairs Director.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 As opposed, same sign, the motion carries. This is Item C. This is a motion that the travel request submitted by LU IT Director be approved and direct the chair to sign for the same total estimated cost of $1,963.52 for the following IT staff, Natalie Nunez, Clint Hartman, Jason Ryan, and LU to attend the Iowa Technology and Geoplatial Conference in Des Moines on June 19th, 2021, or June 19th, which was the 21st, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions?
LU IT Director, yeah, this is our annual ITAG conference. Any questions I can answer for you guys?
Is it pronounced Geo-epacial?
Geospatial.
Geospatial, okay. That was my only question.
It's gonna be a barn burner, I bet.
All right.
Well, attended by our staff at least, yeah.
All right, if there's no further discussion or questions, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All as opposed, the motion carries. Next is Item D. This is discussion possible board action of resolution to loan funds to Barclay Township to be used to purchase their share of a fire truck that will be jointly owned by several townships. All right, is there anybody here to speak this today?
I can speak, and Mr. Demuth, who works in the township, is here.
Okay, excellent.
Mike and I, I guess I'll give a little bit of an introduction. Mr. Demuth approached me, actually quite a while ago, the first time, to say they would be purchasing a fire truck jointly and would need to borrow funds. And as I understand it, from Tim Jamison and Mike Trinan, townships are not allowed to borrow funds directly, so the county has to be the borrower of record. They do repay the loan with their tax levy, and I think that's where we are today.
That's about it, yes.
I think there are four townships that will go together to purchase this. Two of them are located in Blackhawk County, so we loan funds only for those two. But the other one, they have to pay a portion of it now, and then the balance is paid in about a year. The other township does not need funds now for the down payments. That's why I'm only bringing you one set of loan documents at this time.
And so we would just be signing for the loans, or are we actually loaning the money?
We are actually loaning cash to them. We will not need to borrow it because it's relatively small amount, so we will disperse funds from our reserves for them to use, and they'll pay back. OX has requested to pay it back, I believe, over 12 years. And I did consult with Spear Financial to establish a reasonable interest rate, and 3.5% seems to be about where the market is at this time, so that is the rate that we're recommending be used.
Hopefully, we can pay it back in less time than what.
Yes. We have set it up so they can make extra principal payments as they have funds.
And that starts immediately, or?
The first, no principal payment would be due, I don't think, until December of 2026, but they'll pay interest, 2025, I'm sorry, I'm off a year. but they'll pay interest, 2025, I'm sorry, I'm off a year. There'll be interest only that first year till they get the truck and borrow the full amount.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'd second.
You had done this previously, sir. I was going to say, is this a new additional truck, or is it?
It's replacing, replacing. Replacing a 25-year-old truck.
25 years.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anything else you want to speak to before we take a vote?
We applied for a grant, but haven't heard back on it. But hopefully, that comes through, but time will tell.
Is that a federal grant that you applied for?
No, it was P-O-E-T, excuse me, P-O-E-T Grant, 202 impact grant program.
I guess, because I appreciate the work you're doing to keep your community safe. Is it, would it be possible to not charge interest on the loan, just as a good faith effort that we're?
I think typically, we do charge. We will be foregoing at least that much interest revenue. So probably be equitable, I guess, to all of our taxpayers. We probably should try to recover what we're losing, so to speak. If they were borrowing at a bank, they would be at least 2% higher, based on what Maggie and I talked about. This is, this is a bond rate for a larger entity, which they would not be able to access. So we are giving them a break. They're not having to go through all the underwriting costs, you know, any of those kind of expenses, because we're just doing this. So there are savings to them from.
Okay.
Yes, we appreciate that. We did the same thing when we bought this truck 25 years ago, and it's really a great help. All right, I know the taxpayers appreciate it.
All right, 25-year-old truck, that's almost a classic now.
In fire trucks, yes.
Well, you got 6,000 miles on it, huh?
I don't really know, but you're slightly correct. Who knows how many hours on the pump it'll go?
All right, any other discussion or questions, Board? Hearing done, roll call, please, Mr. Veder. Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Short? Yes, resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is item E, discussion possible board action regarding waste disposal service.
Good morning, Board. Rory Given, Facilities Director. Back on May 7th, we opened bids for waste disposal. We did receive two bids at that time. The low bid was from a company called A&amp;G Professional Services, which they intend to subcontract with a local waste disposal company here in Waterloo. That was the low bid. And then, when you look at our RFP, unfortunately, this company that they plan to subcontract with does owe debt to Black Hawk County. And the board supervisors' reserved right to any county owing debt to Black Hawk County will be further reviewed and could be a result in denial of bid. So I wanted to share that with you. Also, the second bid that we received was approximately 130% over what we were paying currently. And that, that was just bid out last year for an extension. So I do have a recommendation for you. I'd like to reject these bids and take another stab at this and see if we can't attract some more people to bid on it.
Have we had any conversation with the subcontract company about resolving that debt?
It's been an ongoing issue for several years with this company.
We went to court with them a few years ago. They owed us a million dollars. We ended up settling for 38,000, and they're in tax sale right now.
Oh, that makes that easy.
Yeah, it sounds like we need to go back out for bid.
What I would like to do, I would like to really do some calling, get, see if we can't motivate some other companies to put in another, put in a proposal. So that would be my recommendation to reject these bids.
All right, do we need, do we need to take a motion to go back out for bid, or?
It certainly won't hurt.
Okay.
I'd make the motion to go back out for bid.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to go back out for bid for Waste Disposal Services for Black Hawk County. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. All right, next is item F, discussion possible board action lease for 829 Sycamore Street.
Okay, this was a lease agreement that the county entered into with the previous owners of the Raymount Towing Company building. And within that lease agreement, that does expire here at the end of May. There is a section that talks about an extension of the lease, which shall be done by a written agreement between all parties. I recently reached out to this company, and they had indicated that with all the rain, they are a bit behind putting up their new building, and they are asking for a one-month extension on this lease agreement. With regards to our department, we, we are moving ahead. We, we have an RFP which was sent up to the board to be placed on next week's agenda for an electrical upgrade for this building. So we are forging ahead with this building, although we do not have anything stored over there, and we probably will not store anything over there until we get the electrical upgraded. I guess my recommendation would be it doesn't necessarily affect us if they would stay there for another month. So although it's not ideal, I'd just as soon have them be out. But I guess I'll leave that up to the board. From my standpoint, it's not really affecting us as a department.
Rory, this is Tom. Would this be the last month, then? Because they're getting very cheap, right?
We can actually go back and look at those rates and negotiate them for the extension. Right now, they're at $1,000 for the.
Now, they're going to, they'll stay there forever until we, I think, liability-wise and everything, I think we ought to give them a month, extend it a month, and then say that's the end of it. From what I understand, they only got one piece of equipment in there.
Yeah, I'll add to that. Mr. Rowland did call me, and I informed Rory, too, that we talked a little bit about the conversation between us, I guess, and about what was going on and what his plans were for the building before I called Jason back, and then he called me. And did say that if they need to get out, they certainly will abide by that. That wasn't the question, but it was, and they would certainly be out of the shop. He said the only thing they were thinking about that would help them was the dispatch service. And if they could remain that office space for another month, that would be helpful. They are trying to finish their building, and so they're pushing people to get done as quickly as possible, but another month, they thought, would be helpful. I mentioned at that time, I did ask, I said, you know, we'd been, we thought we'd been very fair in working through all this. And he said, yeah, more than fair. He thought the county had done an excellent job, and we'd worked together with him well. And just said he didn't want to wait till the last minute and ask for that, so that's why he'd come to us a week or two before. He said, and did I, I don't know if I said, "The shop would be completely empty if it's not already."
Okay.
And he's told us all along that, you know, he could be in there. But I said it would be dependent on what you had planned for the facility and what the board said, because they said, "I'd tear the message back to today," to mention that his call was there and see what we wanted to do. But wanted to share that.
Yep, and as I indicated, it honestly, I understand the liability, and I do agree with that concerns. But with regards to us, you know, preventing us from moving forward with the repairs that are needed, we are working on that. We do have that on the agenda for next week for the public hearing for the electrical. So it's really not impacting us from, from that standpoint. So if the board would like us to go back and look at the terms of that lease, the $1,000, I believe, I can certainly do that. It's.
I wanted to ask the board what they thought of. And maybe this is unfair, too, but the $2,000, you know, the $1,000, I think we thought was a pretty kind, I guess, generous, and actually indicate, I guess, our interest may be if he'd be willing to increase it to the $2,000. But we don't have to, it was just a.
I would be more than happy to go back with that and see what they have to say.
Knowing him, he might negotiate that. It's whatever the board feels.
Yeah, I mean, either way, it's just the last month.
Yes.
I agree. I do think we need to, we need to have an end date on this. We need to nip it. I do agree that at that rate, you know, it's, it's a little easy to say, "Well, I'll stay here another month." But as Linda indicated, talking to the owner, and I've also been talking with the CFO, they, they have a building that's constructed. It sounds like that's well on its way. I do believe that this would be the last extension that we see from them.
I do, too. He did say, you know, "We could do remotely. We'll do our dispatch when we have to. It's just that this makes it easier if we could do it."
All right, Board, what's the desire?
Give them the month for $1,000, but also make it clear that any time beyond that is $2,000 per month, or even higher. I'd say, I'd say. Beyond that is just out. It's just a flat no.
There's no time after those.
Just be done, yeah, to be, yeah, make that the drop dead date. I'd be for that, too.
Perfect.
So I, it's not my place, but I, I did happen to drive by their building on Sunday. Building is up, but it does not have concrete poured on the floor. So the office doesn't exist, I can tell you that much. My concern for them would be if this weather continues, I don't know if they'll be able to get in there and pour that concrete. We don't have to care. I understand that. But he is making a really good faith effort. He does have a nice, brand-new building built in Elkhorn that will add property value for us when it comes on the rolls. And I hope he's able to get in in a month, but I have watched a lot of construction over the last 25 years, and I, I just don't know if they'll make it with this weather.
Well, I think he knows that.
Where does he have, where does he have his other equipment? Because he's only got one truck over there. Where's the rest of the equipment stored?
He told us since he started, remember, he'd be out if he needed to get out.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, it just hasn't necessarily impacted us, so that's why we've been pretty flexible, I would say, we're very flexible, so.
So I think we were still good with the drop dead date in a month, but $1,000.
I'm fine with $1,000.
Fine, too.
All right, should we take action?
Yeah, I think that's a motion.
Someone like to offer a motion?
I'll make a motion, $1,000 for one single month and nothing more beyond. Out.
Second.
All right, so moved and seconded. Is there's any further discussion or questions? Hearing done, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries. It is now 9:43 a.m. This is a hearing slash bid opening on janitorial services for the courthouse, looking at 316 East Fifth Street, Pinecrest at 1407 Independence, Juvenile Court Services at 818 Lafayette, and the Sheriff's Office, 225 East Sixth Street, all located in Waterloo, Iowa.
I'll make a motion to receive and place on file proof of publication of notice of public hearing.
Second.
Yes, we've moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing after we receive oral and written comments.
Any written comments, Mr. Veder?
No, sir.
All right, hearing done, this is a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Now, the bids to be received and open and read, deadline was 3 p.m. Monday, May 20, 2024.
Okay, we did receive two bids. They both were received on time. We are asking for bid security to be with us. First one I'm going to open is from Nationwide Office Care out of Clive, Iowa. Okay, we have a total bid amount of, this is an annual amount, $466,020. Next one is from Fresh Start Cleaning Solutions out of Denver, Iowa. They have also included bid security in the form of an official check. Total annual amount, $264,000.
Rory, what was the estimate?
We, what we budgeted for was 250, approximately 253, 254,000.
I'll make a motion that the board supervisors review and place on file the bids to allow time to review said bids as recommended by Rory Given, Facilities Director.
Second.
Yes, we've moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing done, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, it is now 9:47 a.m. This is a hearing on the fiscal year 2024 budget amendment.
I'll make a motion to receive and place on file proof of publication of notice of public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. We will now hold the hearing. Request for oral or written comments. Are there any written comments, Mr. Veder?
No, sir.
All right.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing done, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and now is a resolution that the fiscal year 2024 budget amendment be adopted.
Is there any presentation, or are we going to comment at all, or what are your thoughts?
It's up to you. I can walk through the summary that I sent out.
I think that'd be good.
Okay. Let's see if I can share the screen here. All right. Couple things I want to point out before I even start going through the line items. We did not do a budget amendment to increase interest revenue, although we expect it to be substantially over budget. I think today, it's already probably 1.5 million over budget. The budget amendment is a requirement of state law, and the only requirement is that you can't exceed program expenses. So I don't get as concerned about increasing revenue and just decided not to try to do that. Also, along the same vein, we're not necessarily concerned about reducing expenses. So there are many departments that had vacant. are many departments that had vacant positions that I did not, we did not try to reduce those. So this is not trying necessarily to project accurately what our year-end performance will be, this is solely to satisfy the state requirements that we don't exceed expenses in any major program. In order to do that, though, there are increases in revenues in the general fund, public health did have increased revenue from various grants, a lot of that is COVID funds that are wrapping up, so we did record increased revenue from those of about 172,000. Conservation, we did record a small increase in grant revenue for Casey Lake grant, and the recorder requested that we increase their revenue by $1,700. I also increased transfers in from ARPA, this is the final piece of replacement revenue for salaries. We had only budgeted to do a million this year, I ended up doing 2.1 million to close that out, and this year, we took less in fiscal '23 than we originally anticipated, so I increased the transfers for that. In the rural fund, I did increase transfers in for expected increased local option tax revenue, that is purely an estimate, so we may need that, we may not need that. In the secondary roads fund, in a prior year, the board had agreed to fund $195,000 of equipment for secondary roads. That equipment, if you remember, with the, all the supply chain delays throughout COVID, they hadn't been able to get that equipment for quite some time, but they have taken and are in the process of taking delivery right now, so they will spend that this year, so I am increasing the transfers into their budget for that. In the jail commissary fund, we are increasing that revenue by 300,000. If you remember, during our regular budget process for fiscal '25, we also increased that revenue for '25. My hope was to get away from needing such a large adjustment every year, because their revenue has been stable at that increased rate for a few years now. The debt service fund, I did increase interest revenue there, about 28,000, and I added a reimbursement from the Solid Waste Management Commission for the new bond issue that they borrowed last summer, and also recorded revenue to record the premium on that bond issue. So our total revenue, I'm proposing be increased by 2.5 million. Then on the expenditure side, for the general fund, public safety and legal services, we needed an increase in medical examiner expenses, I've added 50,000 for that. I've budgeted for the proposed subsidy for the Gilbertville Fire Station of 200,000. We also, this is under the Fiscal Health and Social Services Program, Met did not turn in, we missed the June deadline for them last year, for them to turn in their reimbursement requests, so I'm increasing the budget to be able to pay them basically two years in fiscal '24. We purchased a vehicle for the Health Department using ARPA replacement revenue, so I'm budgeting 24,000 to pay for that. We also, the board elected to increase Community Services Agency funding by $86,000 for '24, so I have budgeted for that in the hopes that we get all that paid out here before the end of June. Public health, they had, they have a long list of expenses, so I am just summarizing it here, that we're reducing their budgeted expenses by nearly 200,000. Under County Environment and Education Program, I'm budgeting to pay Waterloo for the Gates-Burns Park cat matching funds of $50,000 that the board agreed to fund in, I believe, fiscal '22. I'm budgeting for the UNI subsidy of $1 million, and the community pool, which is really Cedar Falls, the cat matching funds of 150,000, and also adding, under ARPA replacement revenue, the conservation minibus of 118,000, almost 119,000. And then I also worked with Nikki, and we're correcting some budgets for Casey Lake that's being funded with REAP, so I'm decreasing that expense by that 64,000. Under Government Services to Residents, I am budgeting for an ARPA replacement revenue computer equipment that was purchased, I believe that's used, I think that's conservation. And then the recorder had requested increased expenses of 1,700, that is offset by her increase in revenue. Also, we're seeing our postage expenses go up, so under administration, I am requesting 15,000 to increase our postage. Also, ARPA replacement revenue, increased professional fees of $52,726, that's primarily for funds we've paid Baker Tilly, also some probably for the compensation study. We budgeted for the marketing expenses that you elected to move into this fiscal year, both to give Gabby some operating funds and also for the logo. Under maintenance, they requested increases for utilities, repairs, and chemicals totaling 139,000, and the warning sirens repairs for Hickory Hills, I've just estimated that at 30,000. Under capital projects, I'm increasing capital expenses for the Casey Lake restoration of 161,500, and I reduced the transfers out for that 125,000 that the board sometimes sets aside for the insurance internal service fund. I, we can, we're correcting how we do that, instead of a transfer, I will do it as an expense, should the board elect to do it, and we'll talk about that more at the Insurance Committee, whether we want to continue to do that or not. So subtotal for the general fund increased expenses is about 1.7 million. And general supplemental fund, we have 50,000 for increased liability insurance expenses. We're a little low on what we budgeted in '24 compared to what our actual premiums were. I'm budgeting to make the loan to Barkley Township, that down payment of 20,000, and I think I've estimated that a little high. REAP, again, reduce that budget for operating expenses, 66,000. Conservation Trust Fund needed an increase of 30,000. And here's the other side, the local option tax, I'm increasing transfers out to rural due to the potential increased revenue that we talked about earlier, because we're recording that in local option and then transferring it to rural, so that we'll have a more clear record of how we've used those funds. Then in ARPA, Fund 165, we're budgeting for the mobile health clinic down payment, we expect to pay that shortly, actually. We're budgeting for the Wellmontic workstations for public health, and also, again, that final transfer for the replacement revenue to the general fund. Other capital improvement funds, we are budgeting 806,000 for increased Destination Iowa expenses. We did find out that we need to budget also for Lynn County's project, so hopefully that's enough that we have in there. We are gonna, again, we're increasing transfers out to secondary roads for that equipment that we talked about earlier, and we are also budgeting for bond funds that were used this fiscal year for the Ridgeway Avenue project. Those were funds from the bonds that were issued for Grundy Road that were not used for that, so we needed to spend those, so we have used them now. And then I increased the budget for the Solid Waste Commission bond issue, and that's to handle the first-year expenses for the new bonds that were borrowed last fall, I guess. So our total expenditure increases are almost 5.5 million, and excess of expenses really is about 3 million, and that's all funds, that's not just general funds, more than the revenue that we're adding. I think that's everything. Unless you have questions or want to discuss anything specific.
Words, any questions?
Michelle, this is Tom. Are they, some of these estimates, I thought the last time Gilbertville gave us a cost that was below 200,000, it was like 180?
That was early on, before they started construction, so I, to be conservative, I've put in the total amount the board approved. I think, I've heard several of you express you hope that amount will be lower, or that maybe they won't need to borrow at all, but I, at this point, I don't know, so I just wanted to be covered.
So really, some of these numbers you're talking about today are estimates?
Absolutely, yes, so it's possible we won't have them.
Board, any other questions or discussion?
I'll make a motion that the fiscal year 2024 budget amendments be adopted.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please, Mr. Reader. Hall?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Short?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Resolution is approved. We now move on to item I. This is a resolution that the Finance Director be directed to increase and decrease appropriations for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024, to various operating budgets for various county departments and offices, as submitted on the attached budget amendment summary. Second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Reader. Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Resolution. Go ahead and say it. Yes. The resolution is approved. I was just jumping the gun today. Item J, this is a resolution that the amendment number one, to Blackhawk County fiscal year 2024, secondary roads budget as included and approved May 21, 2024, in the Blackhawk County Budget Amendment as agenda item number 10H, be approved and direct the chair to sign for the same as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
So it moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Reader.
Kathy, was ready to make a comment.
Oh, sorry. I suppose I could look up.
So, as you know, Dakota, Iowa has tight controls for county engineers for secondary road budgets, county budgets, so we are, we have four main categories that we need to take careful controls of if we go over more than 10% in one of those line items, we need to do an amendment, so that's what we are doing today after you have approved the county budget being moved. So we need to move around money from a paving line item that we are now having that, those funds come out of the local option sales tax, and then some personnel funds, we did not fill one of our technician positions, so we are now having to, we would like to transfer money to pay for some costs that our shop employees incurred over the winter months, working on the shop buildings, for example. We also need to move around some money for capital equipment, as Michelle referred to, pavement markings, and we just need to be in compliance with Dakota, Iowa, so I'm asking you to approve this amendment.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Reader. Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Short?
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Next one, we'll move on to item 11, any reports or information from the board?
I just have one item, Chris. I want to make a statement. 11 years ago, when I was the police chief, we had a citizen coming in the city hall that was engaging in concerning behaviors, employees were getting concerned, myself and Buck Clark was the mayor at the time, he was concerned, and we learned at that time that this citizen had acquired a permit to carry a firearm, and the citizen went on to start naming police officers that he felt were trying to harm him, and that's why he was going to carry a weapon. Iowa has good laws in place for addressing this issue, so we took action to have this person evaluated, and he was, and he was found to be a threat. So he lost his ability to carry a weapon. Again, good laws in Iowa. This citizen appealed that to a district court, the district court upheld it, and the citizen appealed it to the appellate court, the appellate court upheld every step prior to this, and it's a good example of the extreme due process that's utilized in these situations, and it's a good system. Iowa has good laws in place to protect their citizens, and those laws were utilized appropriately.
Thank you. All right, any other reports or information from the board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, this meeting is adjourned.